...3594 Drive, Sebring Florida 33872. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Consent agenda. I'm sorry, please.
...to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of the Board of Supervisors meeting on Friday, January 11, 2019. Motion to approve. Have a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to, uh, recess to conduct the landowners' meeting?
I make a motion to nominate Paul DeGio to run the landowners' meeting.
Any other nominations for the chairman of the meeting? Okay, all in favor of Paul DeGio chairing the meetings, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Doesn't that nomination have to come from the landowner? A landowner, don't you, don't you leave that podium and come in?
Yes, we do.
The motion has to be made by... Never mind.
Forget it.
Okay.
Motion.
Mr. President.
Yeah. Do you have any nominations?
I nominate Chris, Kristen Harmon.
Okay. Uh, we have, uh, consent from the floor? By saying aye.
Aye.
We're in a minute to nominate Kristen. We have a meeting minutes from the last year's, uh, landover meeting and I need to call to have those approved by the landowners. So if you haven't seen them, uh, it'll be tough for you. But if you were here and know what we went through last year, we need to have consent. So we have a floor consent from that, but I can say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're just minutes to be accepted. Next, we're going to have the annual report of the district managers. Tanya, if you can take over this.
Good morning. I'm pleased to present to you the 2018 annual report. Um, if you haven't had a chance, there are reports there on the, on the table for you to take a look at. This report summarizes our operational accomplishments and projects during 2018. As I mentioned in my cover letter, the primary functions of the board of supervisors is policymaking, budget adoption, and setting fees. During the year 18, regular board meetings were held along with three special meetings. Uh, these meetings set the stage for our future growth and maintenance of the district amenities. Uh, one of the notable accomplishments of the board outside of projects was the adoption of a strategic action plan for the district. Uh, this plan encompasses initiatives to improve facilities, add amenities, optimize operations, extend our brand reach for marketing, and protect finances and enhance governance. And I want to thank the board of supervisors for their commitment to serving as elected officials of this community. I also want to thank our district management team, Clint Geesum, Omar McHaisus, Michael Burley, Ariel Starling, and Earl McMinne. I have a few other words that I prepared last night in light of our, uh, community. You know, this week's tragic event at SunTrust, you know, has left this community saddened and shocked and angry. Uh, this senseless act by this individual who had no motivation ruined the lives of many. Uh, this tragedy will make people in our community act differently and secure their businesses differently. On Tuesday, January 20th, the sheriff's office performed training with our district office staff customer service regarding what to do in an active shooter situation. In talking with the staff member after training, it was recommended that we come up with a more detailed plan and checklist for our office. The next day, the unthinkable happened in our community. My top priority is the safety of our district employees and our Billy Casper employees. And although our full-time security department is unarmed, many people in this community feel safer knowing that they can call someone if a problem arises. Uh, security has assisted the sheriff's office in many ways over the years, and we want to continue that partnership with them in the future. So as I talk, talk through that letter, um, as you can see, our, our concern here is safety, and I wanted, wanted to speak to that to you this morning. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, then this time, you have any unfinished business? No unfinished business? Any new business? No new business? Okay, then we're down to public comment. If you have any comments to make, if you please come to the podium, uh, give your name to the record, and, uh, we're, we're just any comments if you have. So any public comments? Grindle up, just don't stay in the line, just come out when the next person finishes.
Morning, everyone. My name is Gustav Lee Varnies. I'm a resident of Sonnet Lake and also a contractor developer. I bought some lots on, uh, Granada. I have been courtesigned with water's only, I think there was one reprieve on the lots? Oh, no? On the boat? Yeah, no. We bought those lots on, uh, a verbal promise that we're going to have water, so Mike has been working on it, but then lots have no bones on it, and you guys have a high impact rate than the city or the county. So they're working on a proposal on the prices, have got to get a quote, and I will ask the board to reconsider those prices on those lots, and not put a water impact on those lots. This past year, I think it was, you guys spent some armor for lots to hold your realness to get investment. I've been building this county over four years, over 27 houses, and I would like Sonnet Lake Board to consider that if you guys don't build, people like me that can do it. And right now, I'm building only one house on Granada. And we, we're more than that. I've been six houses outside Granada, Sonnet Lake, I just picked Granada. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That, that we've taken up with the board at this point. Mike, you're in on more, you're on top of that. Yeah. Okay. No.
Good morning. My name's James Barnard. I live at 5926, excuse me, 5926 Metansus. I'm here this morning to represent myself and my two roommates, roofmates. Uh, we are on the approximately the 14th hole on gear run, and for years, our property's right on the golf course there, and for some reason, this year, beyond the drainage ditch, Mike Cruzman cut my grass in the drainage ditch, but beyond that, our grass isn't being mowed this year for some reason. Also, a continuing problem we have that's, that's addressed a few years ago was the growth that continually comes and blocks our view of the golf course. That was trimmed back, I'm going to say maybe 10 years ago, um, and we would like you to address those two issues for us. And the other question I have is, anybody here represent the road that we live on? Can I address that issue? Okay.
Will you give me a second?
Okay. This year, when we got here, I realized that on Metansus, you put on two speed bumps. You also cut the brush beyond the Prick Palace back about 20 feet on each side, which was great, because I was cutting that. I live right on that curve, and that is really a speed zone there. We, my neighbor said he talked to somebody a few years ago about a speed bump, but I can't verify that, I wasn't there with him, but I would like, uh, you to consider maybe another speed bump. I don't think it's people at Sonnet Lake that, the cars that really sail there, if you get right near the Prick Palace, they just flood. So I have a pole there that had a sign on it, but the sign's been gone for a couple of years, so if you could maybe consider another speed bump, I know some people don't like them, but we've had some close calls there. And, uh, thank you for letting us address this.
All right. Yeah, we, if, uh, you know, we're talking about that parallel channel.
Yeah, and we actually been working on that area, as I've been talking to Tanya of how we can fix some areas. So we are working on it. Jimmy brought it to my attention, uh, a few days ago, and neighbors, and, uh, Ken and I have talked about it, and, uh, we are working on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else?
This is probably not the appropriate time, but I think we ought to have a moment of silence for the, uh, for the victims and families of the people that were killed in this SunTrust massacre.
I agree. We could just take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I've got one quick question. Uh, how many, uh, what's the number of residential permits pulled, uh, this year in Sonnet Lake? Any idea?
Yeah, for 2018, we had about 26 new constructions pulled in Sonnet Lake. We got some new construction.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any other comments? Well, before I step away for another year of possibilities, I, uh, I'd just like to thank the board for what they're going through. There's been some turnover, people resigning. I understand that, I did it myself. And, but the, the office, the district office, uh, these people, I've been there, used to be every day, but just ever so often, so for the day, they are doing a tremendous job up there. They really are. I mean, they're all professionals. You walk in there, everybody's smiling, and it's just, it's really something to have a district office like that, because I've worked with those who are like that. So if you ever had a chance to come up and thank these people, please do, because they certainly deserve it. And with that, any other information needed? We good? Okay, thank you. I, uh, all this team, do a gentleman.
I can mean the regular meeting at this point. Consent agenda. I, I make a motion to reconvene the meeting. It's a real motion, a second.
Dan, second.
I didn't. Dan, second. Now, election of officers. We have a nomination for the officer president.
Nominate Joe Branson.
I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilken?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelin?
Yes.
Supervisor Stegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Okay, we have a nomination for the office of the vice president.
I nominate Dan Stegel.
Supervisor Gilken?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Stegel?
We have a nomination for the officer secretary.
Nominate Omar DeHaisus.
Second.
I'll call the roll. Supervisor Hotelin?
Yes.
Supervisor Stegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilken?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
A nomination for the officer secretary.
I, I nominate, uh, who we like to call Chrissy.
Second.
I'll take the roll. Supervisor Stegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilken?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelin?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Okay, next order goes, resolution of Sonnet Lake receiving improvement of duty to reset resolution 2018-111 slash 09-49, awarding the RFQ 18-07 to the Golfing Book Police, text Tom Jacobson, and awarding the bid to John Dear.
Move through.
Okay, and discussion. Cliff, is he over there? Earl's here. Earl, do you have a comment?
Just to say that it's taken us a while, obviously, to get to this point, but I appreciate everybody bearing with us through the ups and downs of negotiating a deal of this size. Um, this package has everything that we set out in the beginning to try to, uh, do as far as improving our equipment fleet and giving us the tools that we need to try to continue to elevate the level of the golf courses, so, um, we're excited about potentially getting this thing going.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
It seems like we upgraded several pieces of equipment, the fairway aeration and tees as well as the birdcutter.
Yes.
How long will those last since we've now gotten and upgraded? I noticed they were in the dollar buyout.
Um, all the dollar buyout stuff, we anticipate a minimum of around 10 years. Uh, for instance, on the grinders that we have currently, they're coming up on 16 years old, so it really depends on our maintenance program and how we, you know, take care of that stuff, but, uh, the fairway airfire should last us a good 10 years. We might get 15 now, but it really just depends on, you know, our frequency of use and our program of R and M, but, um, the dollar buyout stuff should all be 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
This lease is within budget. Our budget was 182,500. Uh, the, this is an up to 171,625 annually. Once the final financing numbers come in, we expect that to be a little bit less.
Yeah.
And I, I don't have that exact number in front of me today, but...
We, we really won't get it until we give the okay to do it, because it, it, um, it's affected by the property tax, which is based on how, how long the lease term is and all that, so...
Anticipated delivery, assuming we approve it today?
They have a lot of the stuff ordered in anticipation of this happening, whether it did or not, they would sell it other places, but, um, the thing that I need the most is probably the slowest, which is the fairway airfire. Um, it's just simply because it's built in Germany, so, um, but all the stuff's been for, for their footprint, so carts and movers and things like that, we should be able to get it in, you know, a couple of weeks, so...
Thanks, thank you. Any public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilken?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelin?
Yes.
Supervisor Stegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Okay, the next item is a discussion about, um, petitions for speed bumps on, uh, for additional speed bump on Granada. Over. Uh, I can, yeah, hearing from, done some research on that, but I can't even...
Yes, we...
Use the microphone, please.
We, um, had a petition. We had 40 names on it. It's on Granada. Um, I actually, uh, sat there for an hour, uh, one morning, and everybody's, I mean, not everybody, but the majority of people speed through there. Um, so what we want to do, we have a speed bump on there already, we want to, uh, add an extra speed bump, and it's basically almost in the middle between the speed bump and the stop sign. Um, and I, uh, uh, for safety reasons, I really think it's legit, and I think we should do it. Uh, the cost of it is around $1,200 to buy it. It's a, it's the same thing we put on the Tansus. It's painted bright yellow, of course, we have to put the signs and stuff, but I really believe that, um, it will slow down, uh, the speeders. The other day, I was over there, I was talking to a resident, and there was actually people passing each other on that street, so we have to slow them down. We do have a couple of residents, uh, and I think they want to speak just real quick, but, um, I think we should do it.
How far, how far from the stop sign is this? About?
Six, seven hundred feet. Yeah, about 7:50.
Seven hundred?
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, but I need one to speak.
Von Rickert, uh, resident 5605 Granada. Um, we've been there eight years, and it's progressively got worse and worse. I have been coming home in the car with my turn signal on and have somebody, has him get my driveway, pass me, has him turning left, and had to hit my brakes or anybody killed me. We have an elderly lady, she's 92 years old, lives two doors from us, she walks up to get her mail, and because of her age, she's got to stand against, on the road for three or four minutes, and people don't even, they don't even pull over for her. It's just got crazy. Kids are, kids are speeding up and down there on four-wheelers all the time. Um, I just think that for the safety, there's a lot of kids walk down that street, somebody, somebody will get killed there actually, so I hope you'll, uh, okay, thank you.
You understand that, uh, you can reduce that cost if you buy additional speed bumps in under?
Reduce the speed? Ye- yes. Uh, you mean if we buy extra? Yes. Um, there are requests in some other areas right now that people are, um, out there getting petitions in a preserve where I live, they're asking for two, but they just haven't got the paperwork done, so that's why we're not bringing it to you yet. I haven't brought it to Tanya, um, but we'll be bringing some more. Speeding is a big problem, and we all know that. The sheriff's department can't, you know, they can't be everywhere. They try to, you know? Um, last two Saturday nights, they were actually, uh, parked on Edgewater to the side, they did give tickets, I was going through cop times and speeding, but they can't be everywhere. Putting this speed bump is going to help us. It's how we talk. I know a lot of people don't like it, but, but, you know, for the safety, the eight people here, I really believe that, that, uh, uh, we should be installing some more, but we'll be bringing, uh, a couple more petitions to you probably in a few months or, or next month. But we are looking to buy so many at a time to save money. So it's a couple hundred dollars apiece, uh, to buy more than one, so...
Can you get smaller ones than you have? I mean, those things are pretty aggressive.
Even lower?
Ten dollars an hour.
Well, we did that. We, we did that here on the Tansus. We, we bought a higher one, and people had, had some problems. We changed it, and it's, and I haven't had any complaints that this is too aggressive now, um, but...
Well, I'll tell you, I go around and come the other way on the Tansus when I go over to my rally unit, because I go over there and think I can help it.
Forgot to mention it. I believe the speed limit, I'm, I'm honest, is, uh, the only one you can set on lakes is 30 miles an hour. I, I was hoping maybe you could turn, turn that down to 25.
And we are looking into that. I think it's a good idea to do 25, because that is the only 30, but it is kind of a main way in and out, and Tanya and I have talked about that, um, so we really want to...
I mean, we could put a thousand of these things in Sonnet Lake, and we can't do every one. I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. This is a heavily trafficked area. I know that I have a problem with having this speed bump there. I don't know that the one we have is located properly, but I was, you know, if you're going to put one there, you're going to get six petitions from Edgewater, you can bet on it.
We absolutely don't, right, and we understand that, Dan. Um, I actually golfed at a place on, uh, on, uh, Saturday, and there was one street, uh, was a lot shorter than this, uh, than Granada, and they had five. You know, it was about every 100 feet to slow people down. So, I mean, uh, you know, it's just tough to get people slowed down, um, and we don't give tickets, you know, and that kind of hurts in a way, but I'm glad we don't, because that would make our job a lot harder, so... But the speed limit, uh, is important to knock it down to 25, absolutely.
Can we really do that? I have to consider telling them.
That's on my list to talk to the sheriff's office about with a meeting that we had scheduled. We, we're going to try to reschedule possibly for next week, but I'm not real sure now what, what we can do as far as, but that is on my list to talk about. I mean, this is a major barrier for the district. I don't know that that is possible, whether it's right or wrong, I, I think we want to make sure that, um, so that's on my list for our traffic issues, to talk about speed limit.
Yeah, and my, my concern, possibly also is 30.
Right.
So it's not, Granada's not the only 30, but the, the concern that I have is when we're putting in these 20 mile an hour speed tables, um, in 30 mile an hour zones...
Well, they're rated for 25. The ones that we bought, they're rated for 25, yeah.
And only down to 25, I can say. And, you know, I think we need to lower the speed limits. If we're, if we're saying that we need to slow people down with these speed tables there and slow them down, we just need to lower the speed limit. Um, obviously, if the police aren't providing tickets, it's a little harder, but people are less inclined to get up to 30, 35, if they're at 25, so, and, uh, I think that's just, and if we can't slow down speeds legally with the speed limit sign, then I have the question of whether or not we can use speed tables to slow them down to 20, 25 in a 30 mile zone.
I, I think we need a comprehensive look at what our speed limits are, where they are, and let's get some consistency. We got everything from 25, 30, 35, I mean, in it, and we got three-way stops and four-way stops...
it, and we got three-way stops and four-way stops and they just were put in by, I guess with previous board supervision. I guess we could do that again, wouldn't we know enough to do it or not, but I don't think we ought to be just piecemeal of things. I think it should be a, let's look at it, let's look at what, let's get a study, maybe the sheriff's department can help us with that. What, what does it need to be and where does it need to be? I agree with Neil. You know, you don't want a 30 mile an hour speed limit and a 15 mile an hour speed bump. And you may say it's worth, that was a 25, but you better not hit it at 25.
Well, these speed bumps are rated for cars. Now, a lot of people you're talking about...
Not on my car.
Right, but, but they're also talking about golf carts, right, right? It's a shorter wheelbase, so when you hit it, it's going to be different, you know, and some of these carts are 25 and 30 miles an hour, so with the shorter wheelbase, that's what you're going to run into. So, I mean, you also got to remember that. I mean, they're absolutely right. That is a, that, the road where they want it, okay, speed every day, no matter what time, nights, days, you know, the people just don't slow down, so, you know, and we have to start somewhere and I feel that we can do it, so, I mean, it's up to you guys, but...
And part of the, part of the agenda that will be involved with the sheriff's department meeting will be about enforcement too.
Exactly.
So hopefully we can put some emphasis behind this thing. I never get it completely under control, but I would hope we could make it better.
Hi, my name is Sarwana Meeker. I live at 4500 Cimona and I just wondered if you'd considered using any of the electronic devices that are available today. They post the speed of the driver going by and flash slow down. They also have capability for photo radar to, to capture the driver's license and issue tickets. I know they're more expensive than the, the speed bump, but in over the long term, they prove, they do prove very effective in communities. Thanks.
I think we didn't look at that, did we, Tanya? I think they're about 10,000 bucks apiece.
They have solar ones. We've looked, we've looked into solar, we've looked into electric and yes, we have been looking into it. It's just that, you know, the cost, then, then what comes down? Where do we put it? Because everybody's going to want it.
That's basically what I'm saying. We need to do a district-wide survey, decide what needs to be where and then let's do it, but, but I don't want to keep. You just heard we want another one on the Tansas. We already got two and we need another one. And I agree with Jim. It's, it's dangerous down there. You don't want to be walking around that curve. So I mean, we, we got to do something, but I don't want to just keep...
I'm with you 100% Dan.
We, we have started traffic counts. That is something that I know that y'all decided where to start first. We have some information. That may be some information that the sheriff's office might want to know, but we have not done a traffic study or traffic count on either Granada or Matanzas. Is that correct?
Correct, right, not there yet.
We have not, not yet.
You know, but I've been working through, through on the counter.
I literally thought the Tansas were, but there's a, it was an emergency situation because much narrower than Granada and it doesn't have a wall, so we had people walking in the street with people speeding up and down. Or they, even if it works, it doesn't matter. Here you hit 25, you're not going to enjoy it very much and that's what's happened once here. So I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I'm saying I'm not prepared to vote on putting this speed bump anywhere until we come up with a comprehensive plan.
Greg?
Do we have to vote on this or is this just, how does this work?
It's a discussion. It's just a discussion today.
So we don't decide today or this?
It's not required, but you decide this or...
Wow. It'd be nice if we could ever make a decision, we would talk about it.
So can we go back to the costing? You can buy these in lots of three for a thousand bucks apiece, don't you?
No, they're around $1,100 a joke.
Okay, $1,100?
Yeah.
And the cost of the speed tables that we've traditionally had is?
They're around 3,500 to, to 4,500, you know, because you got to cut the pavement and stuff. The ones we're buying, they're 15 years warrant, the warranty's 15 years that are repainted. They're, it's less of a bump. We had one on Granada or Ponce with them that we had to take out because people, or what, people were actually hitting, hitting when they went through. You know, of course, they got to be, these are up to code. The ones that they built, they're happy up to code too, so, you know, it's going to be engineered and everything.
It was, what does it cost to put in the, the ones these $1,000s? Was our cost to install?
It's just in-house. We doing it...
So has it cost?
Well, well, of course it's a cost, but you hear, it takes probably a couple hours, two guys.
Okay.
You know, so it's...
Right. And for a public comment?
So, can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What have we decided? I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
I don't think we've decided anything.
My understanding... Somebody brings in some petition.
I think our, my understanding is that we've decided that we need more information. We need to get some feedback from the sheriff's department on what we can do regarding speed limits and we need to do a more thorough look at where we need speed tables rather than doing it as a one-off here, one-off there. Look at the broader picture. That was my understanding. We just need more information before we...
For a $1,200 speed bump, we're going to push this like, we're just like the government. I mean, I don't understand this, but I promise you, you put it there.
Neil and Greg, I, I agree with what you just said, Neil, but I don't, I personally don't, don't need to hear anymore about a speed bump where they want it. It's whatever we do on a comprehensive look at our community. I live, I live on the Tansas and that's behind me and I tried to do this two years ago, so I would not be opposed to doing what you guys want, but I'd be in favor of ordering that one and getting that in place because it's, it's just a bad, it's a bad deal right there that if we don't slow people down because I hear it all day in the morning and night when they start that stop sign and flooring. And if they stop, and I, I really, I don't like to do stuff with this, but I, I've been in favor of that speed bump for a long time right there. Just, we need to, I, I don't think right now in my mind there's any other place in Sunland Lake that we, we could do in the future. Look at places. I, I agree with Mr. Varner. I walk that road a lot down there on that corner and you got to be careful when you're walking because the Tansas has no sidewalk, but Granada has sidewalks, but it's very much needed in that area just to slow people down, so I would be in favor of...
So I think you could put on the formal motion, couldn't you, Neil?
I, I would make a motion that we decide whether we want to do that now, right there, and then go ahead with what Dan and Neil want. So I'll make a motion to install the one right now.
I second.
Any other motion in the second?
I second, I third.
Any additional discussion, any public comment?
We're going to, we should have done this after we did the two on the Tansas. We're still sitting here four months later and we don't know any more than we knew the day you put those in on the Tansas. That's monic, so we don't like this shit.
What is, hang on a second. Hey, is that, have we made a motion in the second?
Okay, wait, okay, go ahead, Ray. You've made a motion, you seconded to put this speed bump in on Granada and from what I understand is if we buy three or four of them, it's going to save us some money. So I don't know why, if we're going to put this one in on Granada, I'm sorry, I said the Tans, on Granada, why not buy three of them now to have them in, in the waiting room for when we need to find another place for them to go in? Why, why not save the money now while we have the chance?
Just for the weigh-in, we have a process in place which gives the residents on that street the opportunity to create a petition and request a speed bump and they've done that. So my personal opinion is we owe them a speed bump unless the regulations are agreed with. So just to back up on that motion. Whether we buy one or three, um...
I mean, if we can save money, I can change my motion, but I, I don't really want to put any more until we do what Dan mentioned and...
Save the money, buy them, I think, buy them, Sam.
I don't have to change them? Okay.
But this, this can't languish for six months before we take the next step either. Then we kind of have to have it all that looks like that until...
I just like to see the board be consistent. I like to drink this just like we drank the last one.
Yep, I agree.
They came to us with a petition. Mike said this is where it should go and we said, okay, do it.
And I've worked with Drew. Drew and I have worked together on this. It's not that we just want to throw this in, okay? The road is unsafe, okay? People speed there, all right? I live here. I'm a resident, all right, right? I'm not going to come to the board and ask for something that we don't need, believe me, okay? I think they need the speed bump there and then I agree with Dan, okay? Let's do a, you know, let's get the sheriff's department out. Tanya has already set up a meeting with them already and start there, but, but that is a very dangerous area and I think we need it.
I don't disagree in theory. I am concerned about putting in another speed bump in a zone, zone 30 and not knowing what the legal status is of our changing of speed limit. I'd prefer to change the speed limit.
Now, you have to understand also, these roads here at Sunland Lake aren't up to county standards. They're not wide enough with Tansas, right? So that's another problem, why they're unsafe, because, you know, cars are bigger, trailers, you know, and people are flying up and down.
Yeah.
You know, and this is why we're asking. I mean...
Yeah, no, I, I understand completely and I think that's why Dan is calling and I am agreeing, that we need to have a more thorough study of where our needs are.
And I support that 100%, and, and I'm sure Tanya does too, you know, but, I mean, we come up with this a few months ago. If people want speed bumps, they come to the board, they start a petition and this is how we stack. Now, we have researched it. We've been over there for hours just trying to make sure we're, we're, we're doing the right thing, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if the people on Granada had signed a petition and came to you and presented it to you, they're ahead of us in my opinion. I wasn't aware of the petition. I was just filling in for my neighbor who couldn't come this morning. I respect, there is a cost. Too many speed bumps is no good, but we do have a dangerous situation that we've talked about in the neighborhood for a long time. So if it simplifies for you, and I don't know if you're voting on the Tansas or if you're voting on Granada, but if I'm reading the draw, right, there's people here that put a petition in that have the same dangerous situation. It simplifies then, we can go back and get a petition, probably your people later. I can tell my roommate's that, but I think they're needed and if there's an inconvenience going over them, that's the reason they're put there. Thank you. Thank you.
I would have one more comment. I'm not opposed to this particular situation. I am opposed to continuing to move it. I want to see a plan before we go out here and put a bunch more in. If you do this one, he's going to be back next month and behind him's going to be Edgewater. Behind, they're already talking about it on Sunrise where I live. I mean, it's coming. Cimona, I mean, it's coming and we're talking 20 or 30. We're not talking three and I don't know that we can, I don't know that we should, or that we shouldn't, but I'm sitting here in the dark and you guys are asking me to vote on something because they got a petition. Well, I get it and I get it that there's probably an issue there, but if you, if you put another speed bump in there, you're going to drive more people to go the other way and you're going to have the same situation other places. We, we need to, I think the lady, I don't remember her name, that was talking about the electronic speed thing, I talked to Tanya about that, what, six months ago? To me, that's a lot better situation. It's more expensive, but it's another situation. But until we do that, do we really want all the traffic that's going through Granada, wouldn't we be better off to put a $5,000, whatever it costs radar that shows you your speed and says your speed? That's what those people do. So I'm not sure speed bumps are the right answer is what I'm trying to say and I want a plan that comes to me and says, the sheriff says, this is what the speed limit ought to be. This is what the sheriff says. That's what I'm asking.
Tell me what we're... I mean, why don't we do this? Why don't we maybe make a compromise? Give these guys what they want, but they did exactly what we told them to do if they wanted a speed bump. And they put a freeze on going forward, no more petitions until we do our examination of the situation?
I think that's what I, I said in, in the motion that I think it's important to do this one, but I don't want to do any more until we get...
So put a freeze, no more, no more petitions until we come up with something ourselves and then we can present it to everybody and then have it come back to us. Is that fair enough?
I, I can support that.
So we're talking one speed bump until we know differently?
Yeah.
And that, actually, that speed bump can be moved. It's a matter of just pulling it.
Yes.
Supervisor Motelling?
No.
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Bryanson?
Yes.
Any other items?
No.
Petitions and communication?
Yes, we have one received from Mr. Dave Howard.
I believe his request would have that ready in the message.
Not that I'm aware of, yes, sir. So any comment? Should we, any comment from the board?
I think the people here are saying they can't read what's on the screen.
Yeah.
You had to summarize.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President?
Mr. Alweard wrote a letter to the board representative and commented that he saw our crew mowing around the new EMS station, which is essentially a county property and also questioning why we maintain Sunland Lake Bogard, which is a county road with our river. And we've had some discussion, Tanya and I had some discussion about if we go to the county and say, if your road, you maintain it, it will not be maintained to our standard. It looked more like a median zone 127 than what we want it to look like here. And the EMS station mowing was a request that the county made since we were there with our equipment on a regular basis and it's a 15-minute job. They don't ask us to trim the shrub or do any of that kind of thing. So the county made a decision that we would do that also. So again, it's a matter of what do we want to... So, again, it's a matter of, what do we want it to look like? And what are we willing to spend in order to keep it the way we want it? So, with that, I don't know, is there any other discussions on the board?
That's the front yard of Sunning Lake, basically. I don't think we have any other choice than to keep it looking as nice as we can. I realize it's not a cheap thing to do, but I think it's important. And I also see no reason that if we just mow the grass at the EMS station, we're going to lie there with our equipment. I mean, it can't cost $50. So, I think it's, I mean, Mr. Howley is correct that we pay $4 million in county taxes and get not a whole lot of services for it. But you could say the same thing about residents at Sebring or Avon Park, if you're in the town limits, that's kind of what happens to you, you pay the whole taxation. So, I don't think we have much choice unless, as you said, we want to like to meet in on 27. So, I think we're doing what we need to be doing.
Yeah, I agree with Dan, but I would ask Tanya, if you can, to approach the county and ask if they would like to make a donation for Sunning Lake Boulevard, since we're doing their job. And I don't want them to do it, because I can imagine what it would look like, but I don't think it would hurt to ask them to, you know, give you something per year. But I guess that'll be your decision, but it's, because that people look terrible, probably, so they, it's in their best interest to give us a little, but I think they know they don't have to.
Michael, can I say something on that?
Yeah.
The county's been a pretty good neighbor to us, actually. I mean, I don't know about the money part and all that, but anytime that we need them for help, they've been here. The water maintenance, like, two weeks ago went, right? We called the county, dated some guys out. I mean, any help that they give us, or anything we ask for, they're pretty good with us. So, I think that's why Tanya, you know, we talked about doing it. I mean, the whole job's about a half hour a week.
Do we help them a lot, too?
One hand washes the other.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying.
But I don't think the top line is getting warm.
Well, you know, I deal a little more with them, you know, they can understand, but, you know, anytime that we call them, they, you know, they've been there. And I understand that, you know, and maybe they get a little more, you know, I think that we should continue doing it. Thanks.
Just my opinion, no we didn't.
Yeah, the board is good.
Yeah, I think being a good neighbor, being intercooperative with the agencies is a good thing. It doesn't cost us much, and I think it makes sense to keep the relationship.
And what about Rich? Any more board comments? Okay, public comment?
Right there, we can ask them to put speed bumps on Sunning Lake Boulevard.
That's our expense.
That they're responsible for that, I mean, I'm serious, no, I'm glad while you want, but somebody pulled a line, you talk about speeding. That's where it's all happening.
Especially if you want to stand, so... Okay, Rich?
Yes, I'm a Rich Holberg resident. You know, three years ago, we brought this up about Sunning Lake's Boulevard. And at one time, it was reported to me that there was some agreement between the county and ourselves that we would maintain Sunning Lake's Boulevard medium, and that they were going to give us some kind of rebate on the cost. Well, after a while, I was told that, no, we never said that, we're not going to do it. It's your street, you take care of. Well, it's really not our street, it's the county's street. And I love the way we take care of it, there's no doubt about it. But we trim all those trees down through there, we cut the grass, we take an edge to the road. I think maybe the county should really reconsider and think about giving us some money back for all the work that we put into taking care of that road, or the median, and the edges of the road. And I think that we should get our district representative involved in that, and see if we can't get something going, because that's expensive. It takes away from our crew from doing other jobs that they could be doing.
Thank you. Thank you, the public comment. Okay, to Rich's point, before I was going to have that conversation with the county, I'd like to have some assessment of what we actually spent. Is there a way we could track the hours?
Yeah.
And how much they cost.
On the whole, on the whole...
Yeah.
On the whole, on the whole...
Yeah. I mean, that's a wide road that we maintain, and it can't be free.
No, you're right, but I agree.
Okay. No additional public comment? Okay, staff reports?
Really very little report from the last meeting a couple of weeks ago. Just been, January's been a great month in weather, and we're, as you can see on the GAW course, it's just been incredibly busy. We're going to do 1,200 rounds, possibly more than we did last year in the same period, so it's going to be a very good month financially, and really, really all across the board, so really all good. December financials are finished and in the packet, and just as expected, revenues were just right on budget, a little bit better. The rounds were down because of a little bit of cold weather this time, but we were up with much stronger pro shop sales, so in the pro shop, they kind of washed, and in the restaurant, kind of the same way. Alacart revenues were slightly down, but the banquet revenues were more up, so we were, again, kind of dead even around the budget. So, right in the middle of really season, everything is, I mean, we're really fully staffed, and have a big event going on this morning, another big event tonight, and expecting a couple of busy months. Questions?
How are we doing with that Sunning on 27?
I'm working on it. I'm having troubles with the vendor to finish the job. I'm a day away from giving him kind of an ultimatum, and...
Have we paid him yet? We have paid him, haven't we, haven't we?
I have paid, I've paid him, I've given him a partial payment. I think he's had, I think he's a guy that's kind of had some personal problems, and I'm trying to be patient, but my patience is about done.
So, what is our alternative if this guy doesn't come through?
It's not a difficult sign to produce, I can, I'll just go to another vendor and get it done.
So, just tell the guy to drop there and go to somebody else? You can't do it, I'm serious.
I can, I'm going to give him multiple...
Maybe I should rework that, tell the guy that he's no longer interested in doing business. I mean, come on. It is a business, I know some don't think it's a business, but by God, it's very money for services.
Drew, can you give us a quick update on the emergency repair at Magnolia?
I don't know if y'all are aware, we discovered it, was it Wednesday? Wednesday morning? We were doing some final walkthroughs on one of the areas that were in our RFP for drainage, because we had a dendum due date for the 24th. So, we were, we were looking at the, there's a pond by hole 16 here, there's a discharge structure there, and on one of the other inlets right next to it, there's a public maintenance runs right next to it. Well, that's one of the areas we were going to repair, because the inlet started to sink, and there's sinkholes over there, just behind the hole to Magnolia. And we were fairly certain there was a sewer leak in one of the low-pressure mains that run right underneath it where it sank down. So, we got, we got emergency repairs performing right now. They had, they got it dug up right now, they're assessing everything that's wrong, because the whole inlet was sinking. There's also another 24-inch line that they just discovered today, and apparently it was an oral repair that was done in the past, which is right connected to it. This was all going to be in our RFP, but since we had to do the emergency repair on the sewer line, we're going to go ahead and get it all done. But they're over there today, we should know, we should know later today the full extent of the damage with the horse mane, but they should be, hopefully in the next couple of days, should be wrapping it up by Tuesday.
By next Wednesday.
Okay.
So, this affects the RFP to you, or this would affect everything, or we still don't know?
Just this project area in the RFP, we had, we broke everything in the lyons, like we have in the past. We had to write in the dendum yesterday that just took this out of the RFP, just the one portion.
So, everything else is still on schedule?
Yeah, yeah, everything else is good.
No, I don't know for you, but I, we're pretty, we seem to know a lot about what we're doing with the sewer, the drainage, and all that stuff. Correct me if I'm wrong, have I seen anything about roads yet?
Um...
Was recently put, what, $300,000 in the budget for road work this year? I don't remember seeing anything.
Um, I don't think we've fully, I don't think we've fully gone over everything and assessed what our roads are going to tackle this year. I know we have a number of them that we want to do, but we just need to stick forward. We've got to narrow it down to about, I think, six different areas that we'd like to start with, but we just need to assess it and figure out which one.
When do the board expect to see something on road work?
We have to work on that, Mr. Brooks.
Sorry?
So, we don't know yet, we'll let you know.
It'll be this year, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was a joke.
No, we're focused on the drainage, mainly because when it rains, we can't, the water tables have to be parked to do work, so...
Okay, well, I assume it's going to take a while to spend $300,000 on the roads. I don't want to carry it over to next year, because there'll be another $300,000 there to do more roads. So, let's spend the money this year, and spend it wisely.
Yes.
But let's do it this year.
Well, it's one, it'll be one RFP, so when we have all the bid specifications for the roads, then it'll be in one package, one bid package.
And that's normally winter work, is it not?
Um, it can be, but it doesn't, as long as it's not raining, you can pay just about any time of the year.
All right.
All right, I'll give you a brief update on the water rain break. We've been in touch with Comcast, and they, and through their subcontractor, and a insurance client has been open, and we've submitted an initial claim to them, and we're looking together on getting this supporting documentation for that claim, but we lost, based on what the owner's told me, about $400,000 gallons of water. So, that's going to be included in the claims, and it's going to be very significant, based on what it looks like, and then we're going to be asking for, predicting a little bit of pushback, but hopefully it's something that we can negotiate through.
Hey, special, when you open an insurance claim, we're not trying to, we're not claiming to lock up, are we?
No.
Because we're trying to get money from the other guy.
Correct. Yeah, this is the, when, after the break happened, the subcontractor contacted their insurance company, and let them know about what was going on, we got the claim number and everything, so. I also did some research on the, you know, what the other municipalities do when it comes to vacancies on their board. Avon Park, any person appointed by the council to fill a vacancy holds that office until the next regular election cycle. And then, when that person is elected, in that election cycle, that's the, the person that's elected fills the vacancy for the remaining term. Let's say Avon Park, Lake Placid, the council, remaining council members, select an interim councilperson, and that person fills the unexpired term. Sebring, there's an appointment by the remaining, by the remaining council members, and they, that person stays on until the next general election cycle. But those are all municipalities. You know, we're a special district, and our, the Florida statute specifically tells us exactly how we're supposed to do it, and it's Florida statute 189.041, and subsection 3B6 states exactly what is in our county ordinance, but the vacancy occurs and is seat occupied by a governing body member, elected by, elected by a qualified elector, so remaining members of the governing body shall, within 45 days after the vacancy occurs, appoint the person who would be eligible to hold the office to the unexpired term. So, that's what it could be, what we, what our, what the county ordinance says, what our policy says, exactly a mirror of Florida statute, so.
So, it's not the state statute, so we'd have to get the state to change the statute for us to change our policy?
Correct, yeah.
So, we can't change it at all? Okay.
Yeah, that's a popular, that's a popular system. The landowners see it as a different procedure, but it's also governed by state statute, and that policy is the same number way, 9.041, except it's C4. As vacancies of the governing body shall be filled pursuant to 298.12, and that basically says that there's, it's a, the remaining supervisors vacate within 30 days, and they fill that vacancy, then that person has a court estate until the next landowner meeting, in which case there's one.
Can you guys send that to, you sent this to the other attorney, you didn't send this to the...
Yeah, I can get your copy.
Copy valid, you know, or we have to...
Oh, sure, sure.
And then, I do have one question, because I like, when I read this, I like the idea, no offense to them, you know, that, let's take his situation, the situation we just came out of. I like the idea of waiting until the next general election, in other words, instead of saying, if he would have a four-year term, you, you know, that we would appoint him for two years until the next general election, and then we go into, have a popular vote.
So, and that's, I think that's what, that he's sitting in a popular elected seat, and the state statute tells us how to resolve that, and that is, is an appointment for the remainder of the unexpired term, so...
And we can't change it, is what you're saying?
Well, I mean, it'd be changing state statute, and that's what you'd be seeking to do, so...
I was going to bring it up, but, board to board, I have a question. I saw how Avon Park did it, they had, and in my, in my opinion, I liked that, they had three people voted on at the same time. Is there anything we could change to that, that way instead of...
Well, when, for general election people, but basically, the way it works here is, everybody that wants to be, become a supervisor, puts their name in, they get qualified to be elected, and then there's people coming, and let's say that there's five people that are seeking two seats. So, when the election occurs, people come in and vote for who they want as supervisors, and the people with the top two number, you know, the, it's all tallied together, whoever gets the most votes is elected, whoever gets the second most votes is elected, and the other people miss out, and it just depends on how many seats are...
That's our existing way we do it, because there's only one year that we have two people elected, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, and what I would like to do is, and this is a good situation since the next public election, is, I'm up for election next year, which is Landmark. After that, it goes up for that, and Ray. I would like us, if we could, look into it, if we can, elect three new supervisors that year.
Well, I think the whole point of having it staggered is to make sure that there's not a drastic change to the board at one time. That's when this, when it was implemented, that was how it was done, is the seats were staggered.
Well, I understand, but just like what happened at Avon Park, I liked that result because the people had a problem with the way things were being run. And they answered that by, and changing the board, I don't, I don't think it drastically is...
That would require a change in the...
It could be the county one has to change.
We don't have to follow state for that, do we?
No, I don't think so. We'd have to, we'd have to change on how the, we'd have to change our, the county would have to assist us in changing the ordinance to make something like that possible.
Okay, and that's something we could, the five of us could decide on?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the county's...
Yeah, we have to, we have to get the county to go...
The five of you can decide to ask the county.
Yes, okay, yeah. And I see that Ron just walked in, oh, there he is, that he was hiding, so, you know, I might bring that over to you, because I just think we have a unique time, because we have, we have three people that are, in a year, that never... because we're have, we're, we have three people that are, in a, in a year that never actually landed for office. And I don't care either way we do it, but my fellow supervisors might have confusion on that. And I like it when people at least run. If nobody runs against them, that's fine, but they at least put their name out and run.
That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
I got another question. Have we had any more communication taken with?
Uh, any more? No, we're waiting for, we had the phone consultation, Canyon and I had the phone consult with the vice president and we're waiting for, hear back from him. I'll probably reach out to him next week if I have to hear. If I, I'll go back tomorrow, today and check my emails. If I haven't heard from him, I'll reach out and just say, hey, give us the status.
Okay, thank you.
Quick update on projects. We received one bid in the amount of 133,840 for the Deer Run pump station. So we're reviewing that internally now. We plan to bring that to the board on February 8th, which is next board meeting. We have two bids coming in next week. On Tuesday, we have the drainage bid, that's a phase three. And the kitchen and lanai is due on Thursday, January 31st at 2:00 P.M.
I thought, I thought that we had to have three bidders? Or is that just a wish list?
That is a quote requirement.
I'm sorry?
A quote, anything under 25,000, between 5,000 and 25,000 dollars requires three quotes in case, unless it's an emergency situation.
So if it's over 25,000, we can go with one bid?
We can, we can do whatever the board's pleasure is. We, I mean, there's been many situations we have.
Why, why, why are we having so much problems getting people that wanna do work here? Anybody know?
I, I talked to a contractor at that meeting that they had and he just, he told me it's, they have problems getting qualified people to work for them. Because when we had the downturn, all their helpers left. Now, he did say it's starting to come back. And Ron might be able to say something about that, but if, I hear that there's more of a, of the people that are specified and tiled and stuff are coming back to the area because the downturn is, is starting.
We expected more bidders. We talked to more than just the one. And that has been the case almost in every bid situation.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to, in general, but I can say specifically on the pump station issue, there's only about three, there's only a couple of different companies that manufacture specific for golf. They're territory protected, so if you, for instance, want a flowtronic system, it, there's only one contractor in this area that could, could bid on it. Um, it's just like if you're trying to buy golf course equipment, it's territory protected. So there was an opportunity where we could possibly have three in this. Two of the, two of those that, that could bid, just chose not to. But in this instance, it's not a, it's not a, it's not necessarily that people didn't wanna bid. It's, it's a very specialized thing that, that we do with the high pressure and the volume of water. And there's just not that many people that are qualified, frankly, to do it or have the ability to do it in certain territories, so.
So when you say we're looking at a bid, what does that mean?
We have to review the bid to make sure it is in requirements with our specifications and our paperwork. So that's what I mean by that, so.
I mean, do we ever go back to anybody and say, we want a better price?
Do we ever go back and ask for a better price?
Yeah.
Negotiating? No, sir. I mean, usually, if, I mean, if there's something wrong or if a change needs to happen after a contract is awarded, then we can negotiate, you know, change orders and different things within a project. But there's not negotiation on a bid.
Well, this is your business, the, 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 the bid process. We might be able to, if we were a private organization, we could negotiate for a better price.
After a contract is awarded, then changes happen. I mean, I understand that.
Exactly as Neil said, that's part of the bid process. If you, if you bid it out, then you gotta.
We can always choose to not accept it and rebid.
Right.
Of course, that's always an option.
What's that?
You can choose not to accept it and rebid.
I just wanna make sure we get the best possible price that we can get. That's all I'm looking to do.
This price is within our budget. We anticipated 150,000 on these projects.
It's under our budget.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other bidders?
None.
No bidders?
None.
Any reports?
None.
All right, no comment?
I live on Urbino Street and I was wondering if anything is being done for the.
Sir.
Pardon me?
Your name for the record, please.
Dennis Van Scoy.
Thank you.
Uh, I live on Urbino Street and there's 3808, has a huge limb laying on the roof. The grass hasn't been mowed in over a year. I wonder if anything is being done to rectify that problem. It's a real eyesore.
It's private property. We can't go on the roof and, it's private property, we can't go on our, uh, we can't go on the roof and take it off. I mean, the homeowner has to.
What are we doing, calling it up to code enforcement? Mike?
And, and, I'm sorry, Joe.
What about code enforcement?
We have sighted him on his grass and stuff, but, and, and we talked to him. I mean, I, see, that's where our hands are tied. We can't go up on the roof and, and take a, and it's right, and it's staring.
I don't want you to, I wanna know why they aren't being levying fines.
He, he has been sent letters, yes.
I'm sorry?
I don't know whether, yes, he has. Bobby has gone out there and talked to him and sent letters for high grass. Now, a branch on the roof, I don't, I don't, I mean, Joe.
None of that is, is really the issue. What are we doing to force them to act?
We cited him, we cited him, we cited him right now.
And what does that mean?
We sent him a letter to tell him he's gotta clean the, the yard up and the roof. And now we take him to, uh, the, to a hearing.
And what do we do then?
I don't know, you know, I, I mean, I mean, I can tell you when, I mean, I can call Bob and say, what does he do? And, I mean, yesterday we took 13, you know, there were $12,000 worth of fines.
And that's, that's what we need to do.
Okay, and, and, and that's what we do. But if a, a branch is on a roof, uh, you know, there's a bad tree in the yard, we get costed all our time. But we can't go and cut the tree. We can't go cut the, uh, the branch off the roof. Don't.
I think we understand that, Mike. Okay? All we need to do is enforce the code.
We are.
Okay.
Right, we are enforcing the code.
So given that.
Well, this is not just a branch, it's a limb of this big round. It's called Monday tree on the house. And the county code enforcement officer was there about a month ago. And I asked her what was going on about it. And she said that they were having con, trouble getting in contact with the owner. I know the previous owner passed away, but his family was renting it to somebody for almost a year before they left, so.
Okay, but please understand, when we levy fines, we also file liens. And that property will be encumbered until they either pay the fines or sell it, at which point the fines will be paid. So that's our only pressure.
All right, well, thank you.
I did, Cliff, I did forget, did you have your decision on what you're gonna do with that second beverage cart?
Actually, we've been, we've been waiting on parts. It's, I mean, we're gonna repair it and just, the other one should, I mean, I think we have that thing, it's supposed to be in this next week?
Yes, next week.
Yeah, next week. Um, so the new one on the end here is next week, but the other one, the other one runs, I mean, it's, uh, it has to do with, I don't know, it's hard to, hard to explain. It's the slide of the, trying, trying to access the product.
So you're, you're gonna try and fix it?
We're gonna, well, you know, I mean, it's still, it's still worth, you know, a couple thousand dollars. I'm not gonna just let it stay. I'm gonna go ahead and fix it. It's a, it's a nice piece of machinery, you know. Soon, I mean, in my, in my, in this capital request and this five-year planning, we'll certainly ask for another beverage cart.
It's the first week of February, sorry. Next week is not the first week of February. That's when the new beverage cart. Sorry, next, not next week, it's the week after.
But we've been waiting on, waiting, waiting on parts, but so far.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional public comment? Any discussion to the board? I have a couple. Daniel, when you talked to the county about the speed limits, could you ask them about what, what they might do to, on the shoe locker there? I, I, I would say about a week ago, I, I saw almost a collision from somebody coming from that gravel. And, and it should be a stop sign there. I mean, it, it was, I've been there a couple of times, it's been closed, but this time, a lot of people don't look right. And those people that live down there or go down there, they're usually in trucks, they're coming at 50 miles an hour. And there's no stop. And I can tell you, I, I'm part of that problem too, because I don't always look right because it's, you, you, you just don't. I, I try to think about it every time, and I, I really believe that that's very dangerous too. And maybe a stop sign should be right there at that gravel.
Maybe a three-way. But there's also, um, on the left, there's a tree there on the right way that has grown up around it and it, it blocks your view of people coming from the left. So I, I would agree with a three-way stop there.
Yeah.
But at a minimum, that oughta get trimmed.
Yeah, and that, I agree, because I was gonna say that next to it, that limb, but it, it really needs a stop sign. And, and I think if you took anybody out there, they would agree because there's more and more traffic down there and they really come on, and they don't have to stop, we do. So, and I'm just afraid there'd be a big wreck there, so. If you can ask.
Yes, of course.
And, I don't, maybe, and I apologize for this, Omar, but I, I could not understand Gus. Again, I have that problem when he's here and it's, it's my problem, not his. But I have a comment after, what did he say?
So let me try and, I think he's putting the car for the horse a little bit. So he's come to you, the district office, made a request for a water line extension. He's bought in four lots on the east side of Cortez where there's no water and sewer services. Mike's in the process of getting some hard quotes as to what it would cost the district to get that accomplished. It'd be a potential 10 homes having access to that water line. There's only two homes there now. Gus is saying that he's gonna build four homes in that stretch of property. Our quotes right now are somewhere in the $30,000 range, roughly. But his request is specifically because the district's investing 30 grand, there's a higher connection fee for contractors to pull a permit because of that circumstance. It goes from a thousand dollar connection to the water to $3,700. So he's been coming in requesting that we revise or relook at that rate to see if he can get something that's more inexpensive because other governments or other entities are charging less for connection fees. But once again, it's not apples to apples. Other entities aren't going out and spending and investing 30 grand. Typically, the contractor is responsible for covering the cost. Not strictly that cost, we all, you know, margin up for, you know, make a margin or profit, but he would be responsible for paying for the entire line to get it there. And then if a neighbor wanted to connect, they would pay the $3,700 to the district, but he's, he's got that investment if he wants the water service. So we're trying to work on getting that as low as possible to see if there's a way that we, once again, we want to promote development, we want to encourage development, but there's a significant cost to this water line and, you know, once again, he's saying he's gonna build four, but we don't know that that's.
Okay, I, I just wanna ask all of you up there to be extremely careful with this man.
Yeah.
Because I don't want you to do anything.
And that would come back to the board, so.
Until he gets that, that he left us over there on Granada. I mean, I, I don't trust him at all. And that thing's been there, what, two years? And I know you got it cleaned up, but he doesn't even cut his own yard.
Right, which you, you represent.
I mean, I, I just want you to be aware, and I, I'm not gonna be too good a mood to ta, to help him anywhere until he gets taking care of the problems that he's created already.
And this will be a board decision, so we get that quote and come back to the board and you guys decide whether you want to extend that water service or not. There's nothing that obligates us to do that. If he wants to pay for the cost to do that and have that benefit, it's gonna be a selling point for the house. He can do that on his own, there's no problem with that. But this will be a board decision. Once again, we're working on getting that. We'll get you more information as we get farther down this river.
Okay, and, and apparently we find you until, until we clean that up, what he did. It does look better, but I'm still, I'm still very not happy with, I mean, that's been two years and, and that's an entrance to Southern Lake and that looks terrible.
We cited him and his lien on that property, so before he sells it, he's gonna pay us anyways.
Okay, well, I, I just wanna.
We have my after.
I wanna keep this going because.
I'm with you.
I, you know, I don't mind anybody that comes there and wants to build, and I'm, I'm for that, you know, me more than anybody, but I don't want builders like that. I mean, it, it, I can't imagine starting four of them.
Yeah, right, no, we, we are aware.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had to.
I just got, can I have, will you guys answer those people from the lay notice meetings? When you answer their questions, I'd like to have a copy of it. Please.
Any other board reports?
I think we need to be careful what we say to whatever his name is.
Right. It's Jack and us.
I don't, I don't have anything against the man. I think he needs to finish the house. He's got, um, under construction before we figure him next out, putting more money on.
Yeah, he keeps mentioning that that's, that's no longer, he has no involvement in that property. So it started, it started as a business venture, became, just, he kind of opted out. The other guy bought him out and now it's just one guy. He's no longer involved in that property. He is building the one on the right hand side of Granada and there is some movement on that one, so.
Okay, so it isn't his property anymore?
Correct, exactly.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, so then, so then all the comments we made.
Yeah, they're correct. So we are aware of the situation, we are. He can still, you know, we started going through the code enforcement process, he, he still speaks to that gentleman, so he's helped communicate and advise him to clean it up and, but he's mentioning that there's no fiscal responsibility there anymore.
Are we, are we filing, are we adding money to the fines? What are we doing? I mean, where's the pressure?
Well, I think the next step is, I think we need to revise our construction permits and see if there's a way we can start penalizing from that angle too, because right now his per, his permit should be expired, but we don't have a expiration date for our permit for inactive homes. So if we can add that 100 hours per day after six months.
I thought we were doing that.
I was looking at the statute for one year.
So the county, we called the county and they have, I think it's 60 days inactive, they have to come back and renew it. It costs them 75 bucks to renew and there's no penalty, no nothing. Um, so which is not, what we're looking to do, we're looking a little bit more aggressive. So we're looking at what Florida statutes and what legal ramifications we can really start imposing on this.
Well, we, we need to be careful that we don't hold him accountable if he's not involved in that anymore and held up whatever other stuff he wants to do.
He did start that, all right?
He did start it, correct.
Okay. So if he starts something else.
Right.
It could end up the same way this one.
Right.
Okay.
Any idea how long it will take us to come up with a traffic, roads, whatever you wanna call it, plan around here?
Uh, I think Danny can answer that one.
I have a few ideas. I'm gonna talk with Mike and George and Drew probably today about what our interim plan I'm going to talk with Mike and George and Drew probably today about what our interim plan is, so I will have an answer for the board with them very soon.
I think Neil's point being made that we really need to address the speed limits around here, particularly on Granada, and it doesn't make sense that it's higher than streets that have less traffic. I mean, we're getting a lot of, that's the back way out of here, and you're really getting there. Another issue, this is mine, if you look at Drew's maps, it says the new street that's cut through, the Schumacher, says Ortega. If you look at the stop signs or the street signs, they say Ortego. Do you know which one's correct?
I believe that.
What, there were ones...
There was three signs that were correct, and there was one that was incorrect. George, they're all say four, they're all correct now.
They all say Ortego, but if you look at his map, it says Ortega.
Why did that get revised?
I don't really care, but we ought to be correct.
That's a non-engineering country.
And Drew, everything else has Ortegos, Ortega as well. I mean, he looks like he's over...
Yeah, on the county website, it's Ortegos. Drew messed up, yes.
Okay, actually, the item is board training, is being conducted by David Schumacher. The public is welcome to stand up there if they choose.
When you came in as a new supervisor, but we just don't go over it annually or try to. The first part is just a basic overview of what you guys' role is. To understand and comply with the Sunshine Law, the code of ethics for public officers, govern the district by setting policies and procedures, and that's in our Procedure A, I mean, our policy being on A-1107. Your delegate authority, executive authority to general manager approve the budget financing, including operations and maintenance assessments, holding and attending regular public board meetings, and planning for future growth. Big picture stuff is what you, is what the point of the board is. Only the board can take action and make directions. This is, you know, we go over this specifically because of the laws that we were involved in a while back. Individual supervisors can request information or advice from district staff. They should avoid giving directions to district employees unless it's simply authorized. So, you guys act as a board individually, you're not supposed to be directing employees. You can always have a conversation with Tanya. If you don't think that district employee is doing something they're supposed to be doing, executive authority belongs to her, and she's the one that's missing about directions. The Sunshine Law, Florida Statute 286.011 is the statute. And it's got three basic requirements. That the meetings or public boards or commissions must be open to the public. Reasonable notice of the meeting must be given, and minutes of the meeting must be promptly taken in or recorded. This is a big question, what constitutes a meeting? It's any time two or more members of the board are discussing some matter which foreseeably will come before the board or commission for a vote. And so, if you think you're having a conversation, you have to think to yourself, is what we're talking about, is it possible that we're ever going to have to vote on this issue? If the answer is yes, then you should not be talking about it unless it's at a public meeting. Sometimes it may apply to a single board member, if that board member's been given or delegated decision-making authority, but that's not generally something that we deal with. You are allowed to transfer information. So, the main thing is you can transfer, it does constitute a meeting if you're transferring information unless there's some sort of interaction. So, it's perfectly okay to send each other emails and say, hey, look at this. You know, this is some information I found. If it's purely informational, that's fine, but do not do any sort of opinions in that. So, you should say, this is something I would support, that is a no-no. So, just, generally what I say is it's better to be safe than sorry. The best way to disseminate information amongst each other is to send it to Tanya and ask her to send it out to the board. That way, there's at least another level of protection there, just in case you accidentally, you know, put something in the email that should not be transmitted. Tanya can hopefully catch that and, you know, then submit it, you know, just information for her. That kind of goes into intermediaries, not allowed to use intermediaries. So, which means you can't talk to somebody and say, hey, you know, I want you to get this information or let, you know, so-and-so know this. You know, it's only, you know, any time opinions are involved, your opinions or what you support or what you're against should only be discussed at public meetings. Reasonable notice of the meeting is, and lots of this isn't applied to you specifically, but I do like to go over, a lot of it is for district staff. The Sunshine Law does not define reasonable notice, but it generally depends on the situation. And we just have to make sure that the public's got enough, is given notice that they can appear at a meeting and hear what's going on. Can't do it at the last minute, give people, you know, 20 minutes of notice, we're going to have a meeting. Public meeting is exactly that, it's open to the public, anybody that wants to can attend. You know, they don't have to be a resident of Sunland Lake, they can show up at our meeting if they want to, as long as they behave and don't interrupt the meeting or cause a commotion. You know, they're allowed to be here, it doesn't matter, you know, where they're from. Public participation, that's kind of a link thing, but we're pretty lax here about how we do public comment. The way, you know, we do that is, it generally boils down to that public comment is encouraged. We're supposed to want to get ideas from the public, we're not supposed to try and refrain from allowing them to give that, but at the same time, the meeting has to be conducted in orderly manner. And if there's any time where you think that the meeting is, you know, being, you know, it's being disrupted in any way, you know, whether it being slowed down or the president has the ability to, you know, bring it back on track and end public comment. All of our documents say that you're given three to five minutes. There are three minutes with an additional possible, and if two more, you know, when I'm doing the timekeeping, I'd ideally give them the full five minutes, you know. If it's 99% of the time, you know, after the three minutes are up, the board says give them the extra two, so why are you always giving them the five minutes and then let the president know that they've had their five?
Time every public comment.
Generally, yeah, so, and that's... Yeah, and sometimes, like I say, if they get up there and ask a question, and then the board or a district personnel start answering, I'll pause that, because, you know, they're getting a response, you know, I'm not going to time them for them standing there listening to someone answer their question. But as I say, at the same time, you know, public comment is exactly that, it's public comment, you know. If they want to ask questions, that's fine, but it's not a question and answer session. If they can ask their question, and we can say, okay, you know, we've got your question, it's on record, and we'll respond to you later. You don't have the feeling of obligation to, you know, that we're going to, you know, sit there and go back and forth, you know, with the question and the answer session. It's not what public comment's about.
Do we think that's a good rule?
I'm sorry?
I said, do we think that's a good rule? I think if people come to the meeting and they get up and ask a question, if we can't answer, we're...
Oh, no, yeah, I agree, yeah, I mean, I don't think there's, I don't, I'm just saying that it's not a requirement. So, I mean, if, you know, if someone starts pounding the podium and say, I want answers to this, well, I'm sorry, but, you know, you're not entitled to an answer right now. You know, this is for public comment. I completely agree that if we can answer the question, we should, you know, because that makes it, you know, it gives it appearance and transparency, and there's no reason that they shouldn't get an answer if we've got the answer to give right now.
We have given you an example today. Barhart, Jimmy gets up and he's talking about a speed bump. He obviously knew nothing about the petition that we kind of discussed that we would need in order to go forward with it. And we, but we should have told him, you know, Jimmy, we've got this rule that we put into place. There's a, you know, you need a petition, 25 signatures, but we didn't address it. I would think we should have.
Well, yeah, I mean, I would say that's not a bad idea, and maybe, you know, I'm assuming that somebody or some district personnel will get that, you know, get that information out there too. And also, just from here being here at the meeting, I think he now understands that. So, but, yeah, I mean, I don't think that we, there's any reason that we don't, you know, specifically shouldn't answer questions, you know, unless there's, you know, some potential legal ramifications, in which case, you know, I'll put a, I'll say, whoa, 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 you know, let's hold off on answering that until we do a little bit more research or something. But, yeah, generally, that's the main thing that I want you guys to know, is that there's no requiring that if someone gets up and asks a question, say, we're not required to give them an answer on spot.
I'm told that the county has a timer that shows up at three minutes.
As does the school board.
I wonder what that would cost us and when we would get that.
To my understanding, I believe it's on the podium, right? As you walk up?
Hey, there's a, yeah, there's, I don't know what the category is, but the school board has a clock with the timer and the lights.
The reason I mention that is that I have been, I have heard scolded that some people get more than their five minutes, and some people don't get their five minutes. And, you know, some of them feel like their, the meeting is taken over by a certain number of people and everybody else gets it.
I don't know if you can do much about that if it's broken, broken to...
We can do a whole trip, but at least that way, everybody sees, everybody gets the same.
Yeah, I think the...
The basic fairness issue is one of the basic things.
What I've seen is that our public comments are very informal.
Correct.
Much more informal than anywhere else I've seen.
That's correct, thank you. I was shocked when I first came here, but the people suddenly expected a public comment.
And with the exception of Mr. McDonald two weeks ago, I haven't seen anybody really run on the podium. But I have seen coming back and forth to the podium, which is unusual. And I, you know, I don't know if there's a need to more formalize it. I'm not sure that, you know, we need to develop some whistle, slight, some action, because I have seen a lot of...
Yeah, we haven't had the issue lately, but we have in the past.
Yeah, we had, one meeting, we had one person out there come up five times for five minutes. That's 25 minutes. He talked more than I did that day. And at the same meeting, another guy had, went up there four times for five minutes. Now, that's...
We've also had a situation where we had to have a deputy to keep them fighting each other. So, we really need, I think we need to get a little more...
Yeah, actually, that's, I'm happy to do whatever you guys like to do. It was, and the timekeeper, the timekeeper, you know, position was given to me because it used to be the, you know, a member of the board was doing it, and it's that some people just, you know, didn't have, didn't have the authoritativeness to tell people, hey, your time's up, but...
Or didn't agree with it.
Yeah.
You know, that's, when the president was in charge of it, it's all who was president.
I have another question about, I guess we need this in the board, we're... I have another question. There have been incidents since I've been on the board that I thought some of the public comments were less of a comment than they were an attack on some of our people. And to me, that's unacceptable. I'm a big boy and take care of myself, but there's got to be some way that we can have a policy that says, an ethics policy, if you will, not only for us but for them. That, you know, you just don't do...
Well, I say, I mean, it's, you guys are the board, you know, the president runs the meeting, but you guys are all board members, and if you're, you know, disagreeing with what someone, or you don't like the way someone is, you know, addressing staff or whatever, feel free to speak up. You know, you can tell them, hey, that's, you know, inappropriate, you know. And we can always, you know, we tell them, hey, you've had your time, we're cutting you off. You know, your comments aren't appropriate, we're not going to let you keep, you know, running on. So, it's up to, you know, it's up to you guys.
Is there, or should there be a limitation on how many times they can come up and comment on a particular item?
Well, I mean, generally, as you've got your, you've come here per topic, you know, you get up to five minutes, yes.
For resolutions?
Yeah.
So, for each resolution, the same person could come up? If you have five resolutions, they technically could come up five different times on that resolution, and then, of course, public comment at the end, so...
But I've seen people come up more than...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
On one topic, yes, that is true.
And that just depends on how formal we want it, you know, we want to get you guys. You're the board, you run the meeting, or the president runs the meeting, but you guys could, you know, basically say, if you can, no, sorry, you know, you've had your five minutes, you've had your time. Public records, basically anything under the Florida Supreme Court. All materials made or received by an agency in connection with official business, which are used to perpetuate, communicate, or formalize knowledge, regardless of whether it is in a final form or the ultimate product of an agency constitutes a record. So, basically, anything that's any sort of written document at all, if you're, you know, arguably, if you're taking notes at a board meeting, you know, and it's about that board meeting, that's arguably a public record. So, Christie is the public records custodian, and so, but, until, you, the person that creates the record is the custodian of that record until it's been turned over to the records custodian. So, if your, if a record is created, that could be even a, you know, text message. If you send a text message that's about official business, you know, that's why Friday, you know, phone calls are fantastic, because there's no record, you know, other than that you made the phone call, like, you know, what you say, so, if I could, if you can call someone at the district, you know, rather than, you know, emails are great, because all of you guys have emails that run through the district. And so, that's already being, you know, that's already being, you know, recorded and, you know, kept memorialized. But any other type of document that you create arguably is a public record and you need to turn it over to Christie, and when you turn it over to Christie, you can stop worrying about it. Because the good news is, is there don't, we don't have to keep multiple. So, even you, if you just give it to Christie, a copy of something, and once she has the copy, you can destroy yours without, you know, as long as the record's custodian has. And she's the one that has to worry about keeping it.
I sent Tanya an email.
Correct, correct, yeah. And if you see anybody, anybody that's got an SNL District dot org email address, it's going to be saved, yeah, saved on the servers. So, and then there's a time limitation, on how long we have to keep records. The, what determines that is the subject, you know, something, if it's about a meeting that takes place tomorrow, you know, that record may only have to be kept 30 days. But if it's about budgetary stuff, that generally has to be kept seven years. So, there's no specific rule on how long a record has to be kept based on what the type of record that, what is all about is the content. So, you know, in general, if you've got any, if you've got any concerns about what you have to keep up, just give it to Christie.
Emails between us and residents on our home system are those public records?
If it's about, technically, if it's about district business, so, if someone sends you an email to your personal email account about a speed bump, yes, that's arguably a public record. So, you need to get a copy of that to Christie. And that's what I say, generally, you know, if you're, if someone's, if anybody wants to send you guys an email on anything to do with the district, tell them to send it to your SNL District dot org email address, so that you don't have to worry about it.
I guess that's a big question.
I never, of course, I'm not a tech person, that some of us are, but I just, after the trouble the other guys got into, I wouldn't answer if I get a text or anything. There is no way that I'm going to be texting stuff.
There you go.
Period.
It'll take you a long time to do a text on your phone.
That's right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I learned early in my Sunland Lake supervisor thing that I'd go to Tanya and say, I don't want, I don't like this one or that. And she very respectfully listens to that. But I learned real quick that it doesn't make a difference what I think. And, and I know some of my other supervisor friends do that, but I want to know if there's a way, I mean, because sometimes I have, you know, sometimes I thought I had a good idea, and I kind of wished it, if I want that out, do I ask Tanya to ask people? Or how do we, how do we get a message, how do I get a message to him that I don't like something and I'd like to...
You can't, that's a violation of the Sunshine Law.
So, and what I've done, right away, I check my ego at the door, because it don't mean nothing what I think. It means what, three of us think?
Correct.
And that's flat. And so, that's why I haven't had too many arguments with even employees, because it don't make any difference what I think. And first and second of all, I wouldn't treat an employee like that, you know.
Well, and actually, when it comes to, if it's about, if it's something that's going, like some sort of district operation, then, yeah, Tanya's the person to, you know, to address that too. And if Tanya can't handle it, or feels that there's, you know, it's to a point where her board intervention is necessary, she'll bring it to the board.
Okay.
So, that's, yeah, that's generally how that would work.
But if I have an idea and I ask Tanya, if I don't ask her, she won't ask, or can't ask the other supervisor?
Well, yeah, she's not, no, so, let's say, if there's a concern you have, you know, you can raise that concern to Tanya, and Tanya can bring that concern up to other board members. But what Tanya can't do is say, you know, Mr. Gilpin approached me, and he doesn't like this and wants to do something about it, you know, would you support, you know, also, is this a concern of yours? You can't, you know, word it that way, that's acting as an intermediary. So, basically, you just raise, if you raise a concern, she can say, you know, this is something that's been brought to my attention, just as to say where it comes from, and see if other people share that concern. She just has to say where it comes from and see if other people share that concern. And like I say, if you always, as board members, you know, technically, two board members can bring something, you know, put something on the agenda, the president can do it, or, you know, two board members together. So if two more board members go to Tanya with the same issue, then arguably, that's something that's-
Well, how do I know that?
Well, you don't, yeah, you don't, yeah, you don't.
So how do I know we have to, she knows, but what if she don't like? It ain't going to get on there. Well, but that's what I mean, see, it's very frustrating, we can't, I can't even call them and say, you think we have to talk about this?
The time to do that would be in the board report.
Yeah, you can always do it in board discussion, or you can always-
Yeah, but sometimes, sometimes it's six weeks between me and it.
If you bring something to Tanya and you don't think she's dealt with it timely or appropriately, then you can bring it to the board, head the board to board, and then the board can deal with it or put it on the future.
Yeah, the future, yeah, that's correct.
But I've handled it pretty good for three years, I just give up. I really did, I mean, I realized right away that what I think don't mean nothing.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, you walk in, you're-
You've got to check your ego with that door right there.
Yeah, I think, I think what we all think matters is just that it's difficult for us to share those opinions with each other. And that's, that's where the Sunshine Laws make reality difficult.
But that's like I said, that's exactly what the board discussion section is for, is to get all that stuff. If there's something that's concerning you and it doesn't, like I say, if you go to, if you go to Tanya and say, this is, you know, a concern of mine, and it doesn't show up on the agenda, then, you know, okay, well, you know, obviously, no one else brought it, Tanya has an issue. So then it more disgusts you to say, hey, I talked to Tanya about this, you know, and I'd like to see, you know, see if there's any support. Because if the other four, if you bring something and none of the other board members are, you know, in favor of it or don't, then, you know, there's your answer.
Yeah, well, that, all I want to know is if they're in favor or not. That's, that's all, I don't, you know, I don't even care if I win. But I would like my opinion to be known by all these guys.
Yeah, that's what board discussion is for.
And that's-
And you guys have been doing a good job of that, you know, that's how it's been being used, so.
But if, if it's something the old one brought up, that's the way I could, if I, because that happens a lot. I want to talk about it, but we don't want to put it too long. I'd still like to get it to my supervisor. So then, would it be special if we asked Tanya to do that?
Well, the question then becomes, is it something that's going to require a vote? And if it's something that's going to require a vote eventually, then, you know, you can't, you can't do it.
The only way we could, we could get, yeah, the only way we could get to it then, if I don't, if somebody doesn't do it, I can just bring it up at the meeting whether you want it or not.
I think a perfect example of that is when we went through the song and dance on these speed bumps. We, in my opinion, we shouldn't have been talking about that today. We should have received their petition and said, we'll get back to you. Because we were not prepared to do what we did, in my opinion. We should have been, we should have had a policy, we should have had a plan in place and this, you know. Next thing you know, we're going to have ten, ten on that one.
We did have a plan.
No, we did have a plan.
It may not have been the right plan, but we did have a plan.
All we said was go get a petition and we'll consider it. We walked in here today, they got a petition and we approved it. We didn't have a plan to do that, we had a plan.
We didn't give them time.
Exactly, they got it today and they were expecting it. We should have a plan in place, you know, I guess we'll have that in the future, but we got our people saying, I'm in favor of this, y'all approve it. Well, wait a damn minute, who asked? We got the cart before the horse, in my opinion.
I understand, but what we did on the Kansas.
Well, that was a different situation to me.
Why is that a different situation?
That's an emergency because somebody was going to get killed.
How do you know it's always going to be killed on Granada?
I don't, I don't, but there's-
We did, we did A, B and C on the Kansas, always, and I'm saying we should have done A, B and C on Granada. And then if you say, you know what, I'm having second thoughts, like we did, this is no good, let's change it.
I'm not saying it's no good, I'm just saying-
Well, I mean, let's reevaluate how we proceed going forward.
Yeah, well, and like I say, there's, there, one of the things that I've dealt with the entire time that I've been advising you guys is there's, they're worried about precedent, there's no precedence. There's no, you know, there's, the main thing is that if you have a policy, that you follow the policy. And like I say, my recollection of how we ordered the speed bump policy is that they come, they're going to bring up a petition and they say, this is what we want, and then you guys make a decision in a timely manner, either yes or no. And so, but, I mean, there's no, was it required that we did something they know is that? Because that's not a requirement that we did something, but there was a motion in a second and that's how it works. If there's a motion in a second, we've got to have a vote, so.
Because then I got to decide whether to vote it. No, it's something I really think probably needs to happen, but I didn't think it was appropriate to do it in the manner that it-
Yeah, that's-
I say, and that kind of stuff happens all the time, you know, I'm not, I'm not in disagreement, you know, I'm sure Mr. Hoteling is not in disagreement with putting the speed bump there, it's just a process about it.
Honestly, Jim Barnhart has a lot more need for a warrant where he's talking about than they do. You're going to get somebody killed one day.
And the sheriff's office might have a different, a pan on all this. I would like to have a team to talk with him.
But you've got a sidewalk, if you're going to walk down with him.
Don't disagree, the sidewalk makes a big difference.
You come around that corner, they're doing forty miles an hour, they can't even see you until they're fifty feet.
Forty mile an hour in the country on East Avenue, you're not a test person.
I'm sure of that too. But you're, this one we put in, now you're going to get six more on the sidewalk.
No doubt, no doubt.
We get six more requests, but it doesn't mean everybody get it.
Well, we're not making a request anymore, right?
Although, yeah, that's the one thing that came today, is that there are people, they're now on notices that, you know, if you want to, we're going to look at, we're going to plan it.
And we'll make the decision, we're not taking requests. Well, but there's also still a possibility that the sheriff could come in and say that we've over-speed controlled that area and we may have to take it out.
We may have to.
That's what we're going to play with.
We tried it on the street, huh?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's-
We have to take it out, we moved it before.
Yeah. That's the good thing of what we're putting in is, ease of removal.
Yeah, and that's the reason I voted for it.
But I think, I think what we have to do in this case is do it sooner rather than later.
Right. That's supposed to be changed, absolutely. But secondly, to me, we ought to be thinking about the electronics on it. And then secondly, and Randy, the guy we were talking to, you know, he said, they haven't been removed. The electronics, don't you think about that? Yeah, well, anyway, okay, I'll put it in.
Anything else remaining?
Just a quick clarification, because Dan, I had mentioned to Dan that I had given Tanya a history of the initial twenty years of the development. And Dan asked for a copy of that, that's information I can-
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I want to send it to all the board.
You're sending it to all the board?
No, not yet, but I knew there was a couple other questions you had and I haven't had an opportunity this week to respond to a couple of those remaining items. But Supervisor Motelling did a great job putting together a history. There's, there's a little bit of blanks, what, in the nineteen ninety range?
Well, it's, it's, it's the history from nineteen, actually, from what lasted to focus on Sunday.
Yes.
So you sent that to us, what you did?
Of course.
And it kind of ends at ninety-one, which was when Steve-
I can go ahead and send what you've given me in the, in the one document and I knew there was a couple other things we wanted to add to it.
I have a couple, I have a couple of things, if I still have it, that Frank gave me, and what was a four or five page complete history of Son of Lake, like, I filled in a couple of it still.
Yeah, you can get a copy of that.
It's very, very interesting.
Can we get a copy of that?
If I, all of us? I don't know what I did with it, but it was a-
If you can get it to Tanya, she can get it.
Very, very interesting. And it was written by somebody that was on the board for quite a few years.
Okay, yeah, if you find it.
Because among the pieces, I'm still putting together history post ninety-one, because that's when we lost our primary developer. There was, there was a move to incorporate Son of Lake in the city at one point.
Yeah, I read that in there. But it was, it was quite a special history back in the day. The landowners, the supervisors from the landowner controlled this place.
There were three in there.
Three or four, I think, I think there was three or four at that time. And that's why they put it down to two, but even now, we don't have what, but if you've got a big developers in a place like this, they're going to be on the landowner guys real quick. But there's only two now, so I think that's fair, I think what they did was fair. If you were publicly elected, you had no chance.
All right.
Hit that, hit it.